We make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity that our decisions may reflect what is right and good, keep us from shortsightedness and pitying us, help us to make decisions that are for the good of all, and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always through Christ, the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Who had the mo- whose motion was it? I thought we went with the amendment. S I G should be the mover. It says motion.
The motion was-
We're dealing with-
The motion was to deal with it tonight at the special called meeting, so that is the motion, right? So is that what you're referring to?
We're dealing with it, right?
Okay, so you have the letter, the original draft in your package. Since that went out on Friday, we received, I would say, we received an edit from Tim O'Brien, from Trustee O'Brien. We received a suggested edit as well from Trustee O'Hern, and we received a suggested edit from the Chair as well. We had Superintendent O'Hara recommend adding a little, some language around. And what I've done is, I'm going to go through, I'll, everything that's an edit, I've put in red. As soon as you've approved it, we'll turn it to block so that you can see it. But right now, this is the language that Superintendent O'Hara has requested. It's just speaking to additional challenges in growth boards. So I added the sentence here. It says, "The ministry has provided an attrition protection plan to assist school boards." And so this falls under, just so you see it's clear, it falls under the section of class sizes. So we've talked about student outcomes, we've talked about how it contravenes the collective agreements that we have in place with our secondary units, and now he's added another section for additional challenges in growth boards. So, "The ministry provided an attrition protection plan to assist school boards in phasing in changes to class size. However, the transition funding is designed to support school boards with declining enrollment. It provides no consideration for school districts and areas of growth such as Halton. This further exacerbates the financial challenges we will face as we implement the changes in class sizes." So I'm not sure if that's clear to everybody, or if you, I hope it is, because I won't be able to explain it as well as Joe did, but I think the Director could probably speak to it as well. And in line with that, so I mean, it's a valid point because we continue to get penalized for being, we're not getting special funding, and I'm sure Superintendent Lofts can speak to this, but we don't get special funding for being in areas, in an area of growth, and we continue to get penalized. We also added this, and this was the Director's idea, in line with that thinking in terms of the growth boards, in the paragraph under funding cuts in general, it was actually Director Daly's idea, this might be a way of bringing in, you'll notice in the first draft, I didn't include the comments that Trustee Murphy had mentioned about trying to fit in a way to talk about the capital funding. So we've tried to kind of fit it in by saying, despite the fact that we are the lowest funded school board in Ontario, we are also one of the few boards in Ontario that continue to experience growth in student enrollment. We are becoming increasingly more concerned about our ability to continue meeting the needs of our students, and would like assurances that we will receive ministry support in terms of staffing, capital funding, and other budgetary provisions necessary to help us adequately address the needs of students and families who make up our growing communities." So it's a little bit of a mention. We'll do something more, that's a mention. We, oh, yes, thank you. Maybe not. So I'll go back up to the front, to the first one. This is the one, the suggestion that, the two of them are related. We just fit them in, in two separate areas so that we could also do the plug for the capital funding as well. So if anybody has any questions about her, if you're okay to add that?
So I'm just wondering, these topics, other than the letter, in general, how do we communicate these concerns to the ministry when that, we have particular meetings, not as a board, but through the Director or the superintendents? What is the sort of normal schedule way of communicating our valid concerns, financial concerns?
So through you, Mr. Chair. Typically, Trustee Carabella, we would do that through our provincial association, so Code, which is the council of directors, Cosmo, which Erin is part of. So we both communicate with the minister and with ministry staff. And certainly part of, to the ministry staff's credit, when the March 15th information came out, it became clear in the follow-up teleconference we had, that all of our superintendents sat in on, that there were a number of questions around procedure and process that hadn't been adequately explained, and they're coming back to us with that. So that's typically how we, we would address those concerns.
Just as a follow-up, did they give a date of when they were going to get back to you with those updates?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We've actually received some of, answers to some of our questions through Cosmo's already. I was going through them last night. We've got a few. We also have additional ones as a result of that, so we've added those as well. So they have been forthcoming with responses to it. We've added some that addressed these as well, that we've talked about today, so.
Can you speak to the attrition plans specifically? What do they mean by that? So basically, are they telling us that we have to allow a certain number of retirements and we cannot add staff? Are they putting restrictions on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There is definitely the attrition funding which everyone's been hearing about. Now, we're looking at, because we have, there's no wording? In our collective agreements? Yeah. We have wording in our collective agreements that indicates a certain staff level. So that's where our concern as a board is, we have the wording in our collective agreements that mention a certain, particular numerical number that we must adhere to, which makes us difficult, and the fact that we're also a growth board. So theoretically, the attrition funding should be, you shouldn't be adding staff. You should be basically, if all your retirements you're having come through, you shouldn't be replacing them. You should be essentially just using your teacher complement you have at a certain date. Because we're in a different situation, that's why we need some clarification from the ministry, which is what we've asked through the causeable questions. I've added some questions regarding that. So I don't have all the particulars yet, but we're hoping to get them sorted.
Causeable is?
Oh, it's essentially for all the business officials, for all the different boards in the province. They have a group similar to what Director Daly has for the directors. We have one for business officials, so across the province.
So are we okay with taking, yeah?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So it seems to me we're talking about policy, and yet we don't have any policies that have come down from the ministry. We're not likely to have any policies until the budget is introduced, which will be this Thursday. So technically, we're talking in the air. There's nothing really specific. We're relying on, in that letter there, you know, I see it more as a paper, because we're relying and we're taking sources from it, which can be disputed. But yet again, why are we even sending this letter? It's going to go for naught. Having worked in the Cabinet Minister's Office, I can tell you what it's going to do. It's just going to go into a file. We're going to get an electronic acknowledgement. None of this is going to play out. Because we are one of the leading boards in the province, and because we've shown the ministry that we can do with less, we've done with less for many, many years, I think that our letter should be something empowering us to deal with the ministry and be able to lead them into making good decisions on how they're going to enforce these cuts that are forthcoming. Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I think that this is something that we need to do as a board, for our stakeholders, for our parents, for our teachers. We need to take a position and let them know how this is going to affect our board. And I'm pretty sure it's going to come out, I think through you, Director Daly, you were saying, there's how many millions of dollars that we have to come up with in our budget this year alone if we don't take a position and show people that we don't support these cuts? I know what you're saying, but the point is, is we need to do this.
But that has nothing, through you, Mr. Chair, this has nothing, we're getting less funding, has nothing to do with the upcoming budget and how they're going to be putting the cuts into the education. Well, it has nothing to do with it. We've been traditionally given less money, not because of the budget, but because of the social generators that we send up to the ministry. And that really has to do with municipalities, because it's a cost-sharing method. So so much comes from the province, and so much comes from the local government.
So are you implying that these cuts aren't going to affect our board? That's what it's-
So let me, so what I'm saying to you is, the only things that are going to be affected through this budget is going to be the items that they're going to be removing from the 12 other areas that we can get money, busing, et cetera, et cetera. But our GSN isn't going to change. They're not going to just arbitrarily say, okay, your GSN is going from, let's say, $11,000 down to $9,000. That's not what's going to happen. That's not the way it works.
I think, I'm sorry, I hate to dispute it through you, Mr. Chair, but I think the cuts are absolutely, the fact that we've got two conflicting documents, we've got a collective agreement that says one thing, we're being told to cut teachers, it doesn't matter, we're told to increase the class size average, that is a direct impact. Whether it's through the GSN or not, it is going to have an impact on our budget.
So I just- One last comment here. So the collective agreement only goes into, what, June is it? August, sorry. So we've already got that money.
It still has to be, it still has to be renegotiated. So the point is, is we have to assume the teachers would never give that up, and I would hope they wouldn't give it up. But the point is, is how do we deal with it? There's all this-
But it's a new-
We still have to take a position, Vince.
Can I offer just a general comment? This, this is, I agree with you. The board has to come out and say something about this. We can wait, we can wait for precisions that will continue to come in this letter, and we, this letter will never come out. So the letter is generic enough whereby it addresses the big line issues, it addresses our concerns, and it demonstrates to the public that at least we're participating in this, what our position is. As more information comes through the government, then we can decide to put precision to this. So it's important to understand, I think, what the letter, why, the purpose why we're putting this letter out.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and just one last comment. I think particularly as us, as a board, that have been able to do more with less, which is not always a good thing, with us coming out and saying, this is going to impact us, and we have been a board that has done more with less, is very important, and is even more, it'll have a bigger impact, at least for our stakeholders.
Trustee Murphy.
Though I agree with your sentiments, Vince, that more than likely this nice document is going to line Doug Ford's birdcage, the reality is, people are looking to us for leadership. And by saying nothing, we're complicit with the cuts. So I think it's a valuable exercise for us to do, to show that, the reality is, this is going to hurt us, and it's going to be challenging to provide the same level of service with these cuts. And I think that, to me, is the purpose of this document, more than expecting a reaction from the provincial government once they read the document. That's just my opinion.
Some of the assumptions, through you, Mr. Chair, some of the assumptions in the letter, it's a good letter. It's not, I'm not questioning the exercise. What I'm questioning is that we're arriving at conclusions without really having the proper data. Just for information's sake, when the Auditor General looked at our case scenario and did the audit of Halton Catholic, they picked certain boards that they could use to formulate these cut, these funding cuts. So we're part of the problem. We've actually added to the problem because we do so much better than everybody else, and we spend our money more wisely. So I don't see this letter doing anything, really.
Could I just add to that? You know, I think it's, when we talk about the art of influence, which is something I get paid to do on a daily basis, you know, you need to structure your presentation to support your, the direction you want to take. Yes, you need to be factual, but I think it's, there's a little bit of marketing involved here.
Secretary Daly, did you want to say something? You had your head up, no? Trustee Lorten.
Mr. Chair, at the last board meeting, we decided, agreed unanimously to write this letter. Why are we discussing the same point again?
I think we agreed that we would bring it to a draft, not necessarily all right, all agree to sending it out. I know that was my intent to approve. I know it was coming here. I hadn't seen a copy. And, you know, it takes time to reflect on what you want in there, or whether it's going to be a good thing.
Trustee Guzzo.
I'm sorry. Through you, Mr. Chair. That is not what the spirit of the motion was, and that wasn't the intent. The intent was, it was the direction for staff to write the letter, and for us to be able to review it, and people weren't comfortable with it being done via email. That's why we called the special called meeting. So we're here to finalize this letter and send it out.
Would you like to continue on, Andrea?
Okay, so, do you want to go back to this, or do you want to, do you want to accept this amendment, this revision to it, or do you want me to go back to it at the end? I can move on and tell you what the other edits are, if you like. Okay. Okay. I just wasn't sure if you want to go change by change, or if you want to do it all at once. Okay. So then we had, and I'm going to apologize because I had prepared this, and then I somehow lost that file, but we had a, an edit, a suggested edit from Trustee O'Brien suggesting that we include at the front end, so it's inside the letter where we, more or less tell the minister that we appreciate that the province, the provincial government is trying to be fiscally responsible, but Trustee O'Brien is suggesting, and I think it's a good suggestion, that we put it at the front end, because it almost softens the tone right from the beginning, so they're more, they'll be more receptive to reading the letter, if they actually read the letter. But, so I think that's a, that's a good idea. And so what we could do, he provided language from OCFTAs, which was, we appreciate our province's current fiscal and economic reality. I think that could probably fit in right before here, so while we appreciate the province, I'll type it in and see what you, I had it typed, but, while we appreciate our province's fiscal and, fiscal and economic reality, we are concerned, so I think you just need like an ending, like we are concerned that the proposed changes to education policy are going to have detrimental, a negative impact. Okay, and then, and then we can go, so I'll make that red, and, okay. And it doesn't have to be right there, it's something to that effect, right at the front end of the letter. The next suggestion, and it was suggested both by the Chair, and it was suggested also by, by Trustee O'Hern, was to remove, and I think I already did in this draft letter, I think I went ahead and did it, yes, to remove the reference to the fact that you are, so how previously read was, I would like to end this correspondence, sharing the hopes we first had when we came together as a new Board of Trustees in December, and eight of our nine elected trustees. So we're brand new to the role. We began our term with a sense of promise and excitement, prepared to work together to undertake our collective responsibility to ensure the delivery of quality education to the students entrusted to our care. So the suggestion was to remove it, so I've already removed it from this edited version. It's in your, it's in your-
Trustee Guzzo.
I would actually, I actually liked that part in there. As he's a new government, we're a new board, we're trying to get away from some of the previous things and some of the, we're trying to put ourselves in a better perspective as well, within the community and the province and whatever else, and whatever media, and I don't think there's anything wrong with talking about the truth, which we are a new board. We're eight out of, eight of us are brand new to this board. It doesn't weaken our position, it doesn't make us look like anything, it's a reality. And we're, we're appealing to him as a new government, and, and just like we're a new board. I think that there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. So I would, I would recommend to keep that into the actual letter.
If I may, I was, I was of the mind that, well, to certain degree, it puts a, we don't necessarily, the fact that we're a new board, depending on the audience, will either perceive it as weak or a strength, if I may so.
Can I ask, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, how that presents us as weak? Our stakeholders voted very strongly to actually to change this board.
It's a matter of perception, nothing else, okay? Inexperienced, weak, so that's, that's where I was coming from. But if we take a look at it from the point of view that this is a public letter, as much as, primarily a public letter, as much as it is a letter to the ministry, there is some justification to try to present ourselves to our constituents as new. We have turned a page. I'm not going to try to wordsmith it, because that's not my expertise. I leave it to the, to the experts to do that. It's the idea that's important. So when I originally advanced that it made us weak, to some degree it does, from the perspective of the government, but if it's a public letter, and therefore, I can see a reason for, for making that mention. So that's where I was coming from.
Through the Chair. I stand on my opinion that I don't think the necessary letter, that doesn't, I don't want to make it weak or strong or anything, I just don't really feel that it's necessarily that relevant to this letter. I don't think it does any good, and I don't think it does any harm, I think it's just not necessary to let it, that's my opinion.
Anyone else?
So I think throughout the entire letter, we should take into account the fact that every single word should validate our credibility. As a board, we are a new board, and as well, the government has shown, they aren't necessarily fully on board with our opinions yet. So everything that we say, in my opinion, I want to ensure that it just increases the fact that our credibility and the validity and importance of the letter. So if we were to take even a look at the paragraph as it was before, it's not necessarily bad, and I do understand where you come from, being weak. It shows our humanity as a board, the fact that, you know, in the past, we made a series of mistakes, and the new board is in to hopefully, you know, bring us into a new light in a new time. Though, I mean, there are little parts that, that could be tweaked a little bit to focus less on the fact that we're quote, "brand new" to the role. You know, saying "brand new," you could just say "new." "Brand new" is kind of a statement of saying, we actually have no idea what we're doing yet. So do I disagree, do I agree that, you know, does it provide our humanity to the letter? Yes, it shows that we are a collective group of people, we're not, you know, robots, we're not just here to prove our point. We are people representing people. But I definitely think that we should also include the fact, or take out little sections that might make us seem that we're possibly unqualified for the roles that we're in, hence "brand new," like removing that.
Trustee Zarnotta.
A sense of, a sense of promise and excitement. I mean, excitement doesn't really have a place- place in our letter, it doesn't really add to it, so, a sense of promise and, I mean, I can't think of a word right now, but just going through, like, you would edit any, any document and just tweak it to stand by, you know, the, the letter itself does have a negative message, it is, you know, regarding the possible complications of the changes proposed, so opposed to kind of going into a whole new light of saying, you know, we're, we're new, we're, we're trying to do our best, maybe having it tweaked a little bit just to, you know, provide that, that humanity, but also not showing off that we might be unqualified.
Trustee Zanotta.
May I just offer a different consideration, so a warning that we are the trustees, we're not the staff, the board staff, and all those, both the staff and the board are our veterans, so by us saying we're new, we're almost bringing them in with us, so that's.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
Sorry, but the letter's from us, it's not from the board, it's from the trustees, it's being written on behalf of the trustees, we're the ones who actually are the political piece in this, not, the board cannot become political, and that's why we are writing this, right? We have to remember where the funding comes from, it, it's directly, they can't take a stand, that's why we have the groups, and that's what our role is.
Here's, Trustee Murphy.
Just to offer my opinion, to me, it's like bringing a knife to a gunfight, we're dealing with a strong opposition, I understand the Williams' position of showing humanity, but to me, I, I took that as, as a negative and showing a bit of sign of weakness, so my preference would be for it not to be in the letter.
Trustee Antamasi.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, this letter talks about policy, the education policy announced, then it goes on to say, while staff is still in the process of analyzing. So, you're, you're setting up the letter by saying, well, we don't have all the facts, and then you go and make statements, and you support them with, with research from 2000, which has been long superseded. There are all kinds of new studies, well, refute each one of these articles. A letter, if you want to make a statement, should not be a research paper, it should not be sourced. We should be talking about how we, Halton Catholic District School Board, most specifically the trustees, feel about the looming changes that are coming down, talking about the budgets, and how we can do with less, but we've done more, and we've been very successful. We have to speak to our strengths. We don't have to be generic and talk about the whole Education Act and every aspect of it. The letter should be succinct, straightforward, and it shouldn't be based on research, because I can tell you, the Ministry of Education has far more research capacity than we will ever have.
I guess, can I, the words that were forwarded, are they going to find themselves in the, in the core of the, the letter? Are these the changes that you're dealing with? Are we?
I'm sorry?
Are there more changes coming through, that you're going to update on the, on the letter?
There was just one more edit that you had suggested.
Yeah. Are there others?
Do you want me to, no. Yours is the last one I was going to show with them. That's all I have.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
This letter should be very similar to what we did with the cannabis. We're making a statement, and we're saying why it's not good, and nothing else. We, we can't do research, and we're just not there. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a comment here, I'm not expecting anything to happen, but this letter is great, but it is three pages long, and in this era of cut, could be, cuts, could be cut it down to two pages. The reason is, it, it will be filed somewhere, and nobody will even look at it, so if you take out the references, which probably we don't need to put the references in here, and cut out a few of the niceties in there, and just say what we have to say, probably two pages with bulleted points would probably suffice, and just say what we have to say and move out from there. I, I would, it still contains our message, still contains what I, what we have to say, but I don't want it landing up in a cage.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to also say that all these things, I've read other articles as well, explaining the position, let's say, the class sizes, that Quebec has more students per teacher than we currently have, and that they have outcomes that are good, and that there are other factors contributing to student success, curriculum, teacher, even health and nutrition. And I feel that's also important for education of students, for their future, is the reduction of the debt, and we, Ontario is like $350 billion, and each month, we pay $1 billion just in interest in debt. So, it's not, it is something for the future of their, these kids, they're going to grow into our economy, and we have to also be wary of that, and that's very important for them. So, I agree with Trustee O'Brien's addition about the reality that we're facing, and, and then I agree with Trustee Antamasi, that we don't know yet what's going to happen to our board, and I also am wondering if, you know, we have this communication already set up with the ministry, if, if sending a letter like this can also backfire in a sense that it's just too soon. Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo.
So, we've decided to, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, we've decided to write this letter, we need to now figure out what it looks like. Andrea, thank you for doing this, it, I think it's a beautifully crafted letter, I think it's going to be very difficult to get nine opinions to decide on this. I don't see that this letter backfires on us, the fact remains is that our government is making decisions with or without our input, so we would be remiss if we didn't give our input to say that it will impact us, whether we know what the impact is today, tomorrow, Thursday, whenever it may be, the point is, is this is what's come down the pipe. They don't even know what the impact is going to be yet, and we're still waiting, and at the end of the day, we have to make decisions for our children, for our teachers, and in regards to the class sizes, I would beg to differ when we talk to children who have IEPs, who need extra support, by the time they get to high school, with a class size of 40 to 42 kids, chances are, they are going to get lost in the shuffle. So I would love to see statistics come back that talk about those children, because I don't believe that that takes that into account.
It would seem to me that, that what's, there may be an opportunity to strengthen the message, and still make the points that we're striving to make respectfully. I do have, I do agree that the letter's a little long, but at the end of the day, I don't know how we make it any shorter, if you really want to address the issues, but I, I think what I'm hearing around, around the table here is that there may be opportunity, we should take the opportunity to project a stronger message.
I'd just like to say to all my fellow trustees too, be careful, we don't want to get stuck in the, in the detail here, right? We're kind of going off path. I think the letter is just to say silence is acceptance, and we don't accept whatever potentially is coming down the pipeline, I think that's all it's being written for. So, if we can come to some sort of consensus about what this letter may look like, even though I'm opposed to one of the sentences myself, I mean, we need to get it out so they can see, oh, this is written by the Halton Catholic District School Board. Silence is acceptance, if we do nothing, and if the budget comes down and there's something in there, we write another letter, and if something else comes down, we write another letter, and we continue to write, so they see our name all over the place.
This is not the last expression of our, of our views on this, I wouldn't think.
So, I'd just like to.
Trustee Sherrill.
I, I agree with what, what actually, both points made by Trustee Antamasi and Trustee O'Hern. Will the letter, will it do anything? We don't know, we can make our own assumptions, but it's more so just standing up and saying, we as the new Halton Catholic District School Board will support the beliefs of our constituents. It's just, it's just showing that we're here and that we're saying, you know, speaking our, the, the beliefs of our constituents, because the public doesn't know that there's a director's council that works with the ministry, or that there's a, you know, business schemes, acronyms escaping me, council that works with the ministry as well, that, that's all kind of behind, behind closed doors and what really goes on there. So this is less about hoping to make a change, and more so just about saying that we will, as of, you know, the December when you all came into office, you will stand by the beliefs of your constituents. So it's just more so of a public stance, saying, we're here, we're voicing our opinion, and less about, do we think it's actually going to make a difference?
Trustee Antamasi.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Pardon me, comment. So, this government received overwhelming support for the mandate which they're trying to employ. Who are we to say as a minority, hey, look, you're already doing the things all wrong, when we don't even know what they're going to be doing? I think the letter's redundant, it's late, and it's going to have no effect whatsoever. Thank you.
If I may, if I may offer a comment on that, this government received an overwhelming support, there's no question about that, but from a perspective of a school system, they did not receive overwhelming support, regardless of political stripe, they did not get the support to in fact, bring to its needs a school system, with a 30%, 30% impact over a certain amount of time. These measures, these measure, no, because at the end of the day, whether, whether, no matter what your political stripe is, if you have a son or a daughter who's going through the system, you didn't give this government the mandate to basically bring this, their education system to its needs, and, hm? So, they may be interpreting the overwhelming mandate, giving them the opportunity to do what they're doing right now, but it's not, it doesn't translate into that.
Well, but the end of the day, Mr. Chair, we have to be fiscally responsible. This board has been fiscally responsible for the last 20 years, with, regardless of the mandate, and we operate it with less money than everybody else. We have boards that are getting $4,000 to $5,000 more than we're getting. If we're talking about being equitable, let's talk about equity, so let's give the same money across the board, and perhaps that's what they're going to try to do. And yes, they do have a mandate to cut costs. Let's stop it here, let's just vote on whether we want to send a letter.
They don't have to.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I think we're getting way off track, we're here specifically to deal with this motion, to deal with this letter, I think we need to finish it, and, and have it sent out. The motion was already done, we just need to agree on the contents of this letter, let's finalize it. We have a policy meeting starting in 12 minutes, and we have a very aggressive agenda tonight, so I'd like to see, I do not want to do another special call meeting for us to voice our political positions.
One more question.
This is a conciliatory question. So, in order, my, my, my concern with the third paragraph from the bottom, so, in order to get this letter to go out, if we, if we could agree to take the first two sentences out and say, we are prepared to work together to undertake our collective responsibility to ensure the delivery of quality education to the students entrusted to our care, if you just left that in, remove the other part, I would have no problem with that. And just to Vince's point, very quickly, if we have been so fiscally responsible, and we have a higher level, say, at the ministry, that they know, the Halton Catholic District School Board knows how to manage their money, they may take an extra deeper look in our letter, and give more credibility to it, you never know.
Thank you, Trustee Zanotta. So, are we ready to vote on the motion?
Point of order, Mr. Chair, the motion's already been voted on, it's now just agreeing on the content of the letter.
Yes.
We already motioned that this letter was going to be done and sent out, now we're just to decree.
Trustee Guzzo. It's the resolution, huh?
Point of order, so we still do have to approve and vote on the letter, because we made our motion contingent upon the review and, and fabricating the letter in the, in the manner in which it is now.
I'll reread the res-
Which is only, which is only the content of the letter.
Right. So for everybody's benefit, I'm going to reread the resolution here, and the motion. So, let it be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the letter to the Ministry of Education with agreed changes, and send to the Ministry of Education no later than Wednesday, April 10, 2019. I will call for a mover, or we've done, we've done that already. Okay, so I will call for a registered vote. We've discussed it? No?
I'm, I'm sorry, point of order, we're, what you just read was already passed, right? We're just dealing with the contents, whether or not we agree on the contents of the letter, not that resolution.
Do we agree on the contents of the letter? We'll take a vote. Well, have we finished, Andrea?
I think from my clarity, we need to go through each edit and just say yes or no. So, beginning at the, starting at the top here, we have the addition of, and it may not be exactly like this, I may rephrase it based on, because right now I see two wilds, it's bothering me, so I might say, although we appreciate our province's fiscal and economic reality, we are concerned that the proposed changes to education policy will have a negative impact on our students. So if everybody's okay with that statement? Yes? I see consensus, okay? Yay! Okay. Then we move on to the edit which speaks to the additional challenges in growth boards. So I'll read it again, the ministry has provided an attrition protection plan to assist school boards in phasing in the changes to class size, however, the transition funding is designed to support school boards with declining enrollment, it provides no consideration for school districts and areas of growth such as Halton. This further exacerbates the financial challenges we will face as we implement the changes in class sizes. So are we okay with this? Yes? Okay. All right. And then we move on to the, this piece under funding cuts. Despite the fact that we are the lowest funded school board in Ontario, we are also one of the few boards in Ontario that continue to experience growth in student enrollment. We are becoming increasingly more concerned about our ability to continue meeting the needs of our students, and would like assurances that we will receive ministry support in terms of staffing, capital funding, and other budgetary provisions necessary to help us adequately address the needs of students and families who make up our growing communities. Good? Everybody? I see no, okay. And then, so then we're at the, we're at the last point, which I can, I did remove it, I, so what, would it be okay with everybody if we included, we have two options, we can include what Trustee O'Hern has suggested, which is to add a line right before we attended, you could say, cut that paragraph in half and just say, we are, we are prepared to work together to undertake, undertake our collective responsibility to ensure the delivery of quality education to the students entrusted to our care. And it doesn't have to be hanging there, I can find somewhere that it might fit a little bit better, rather than just hanging on its own. Or, the other thing you can do, if you wanted to keep the reference to the fact that you are newly elected, is you could, you could just simply put in the second to last paragraph, we attended the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association seminar at the end of January as a newly elected Board of Trustees. Just by adding that piece right there, you're saying you're, you're a new board, but, I mean, they know you're newly elected. What they don't know is that eight out of nine trustees are new.
My reference is Trustee O'Hern's.
Sure. So I'll fit that sentence somewhere in there. And that's it. Did you want me to raise your edit at all, or, through the chair? Yeah, you have another one. It just makes it longer.
I'll reread it and see what, what effect it has on the attention. But at this stage, well, I'd like to work on.
So, the chair suggested we add a- So, the chair suggested we add a, this paragraph at the start of the letter to say, "We acknowledge..." I think the concern was that it's a long letter, and so the chair was thinking, if we put in a paragraph at the front end, kind of summarizing what the intent is, then they may not read to the bottom, but they'll see what we're saying at the front end. "So, we acknowledge that Ontarians have given you a challenging financial mandate. However, its realization should not be to the detriment of their children's education. Yes, there may be some room for improvements, but to expect a 27% increase in the classroom in such a short timeframe is not responsible fiscal management. Such a dramatic cutback in operations not only has its implementation challenges, but most certainly would bring any organization, public or private, to its knees. The people of Ontario did not give this government the mandate to break their education system at the expense of their children. As the lowest-funded school board in the province, we are accustomed to doing much, to doing more with less, and like other school boards, we are constantly confronted with making short-term choices at the expense of long-term programming. We need to start thinking about our education system as an investment in the future of our province and not just an opportunity for short-term cuts. On behalf of my fellow trustees, the students, parents of the Halton Catholic District School Board, we ask that you seriously reconsider and take into account the following." And then it would go into the points that we address in the letter.
Are we going to the fourth page? Are we going to the fourth page? I'd like to keep it short and send it out. It's clear, sorry, Mr. Chair. The message is loud and clear. Somebody has to sit and read this thing. Think about the office, whether to see and open the letters. Nobody's reading anything. So, let's just get it out.
I put forward, I put forward my view, like every other trustee around here, right? I will go with whatever the... But my purpose was to set the stage right at the beginning of the letter, because the letter is long, and that summarizes the message. Trustee Guzzo.
I can understand why you wanted to do that. I just think it changes, then, the whole format of the letter. Yeah, that would be the only thing I would think, that it would then, the whole letter would have to be revised to kind of follow.
Is there a problem with the message at all?
I think you've zoned in on, you've summarized what is in the content of the letter.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the other thing I may add is, you're writing a letter on behalf of the board. I wouldn't be speaking for the students or parents. You're advocating for sure. I'm sure that's part of the intent, just you're advocating for students and parents, but I wouldn't be saying, "On behalf of my fellow trustees and the students and the parents at the Halton," because the reality is, you may not be speaking for some parents. Some parents may agree with the government.
Again, I'm not the master of wordsmithing, and that's not my point here. My point is to, is to project a general message, which is a stronger, which is a pretty direct and strong message.
Couple, through you, Mr. Chair. Couple of housekeeping matters here relating to the letter. I would like to see the policy at the beginning, the education policy announced. I would just speak about the recent announcements made by the Ontario Ministry of Education. And then in the next, in the next paragraph, "Staff has reviewed and analyzed available data, not in the process of..." I would make those changes. I would also remove any source, because I think we're opening ourselves up for contradictions. And then, on the second page, I would, to shorten the letter, in an effort to shorten and try to get it in two pages, "Halton Catholic District School Board," the logo. We must have a page that doesn't have the logo on there. And then I, I don't think we need to have the bottom in there as well. And then I, the references, I would remove completely. And then I think I would be okay to sending it, even though it's...
If I may...
Thank you.
We're one minute away from the board meeting, so, the policy meeting. So, we have to make a decision either to reconvene this discussion, or we can take it aside with Andrea, provide the comments, and propose a redraft that we can then circulate and get consensus on in the next couple of days. Or...
By tomorrow.
Trustee Charabell.
I believe the motion was to send it out tomorrow. I think it's also a little disrespectful to have Andrea rewrite an entire letter in the next little, like, maybe hour, have us get a copy of it, review it, and have it ready for tomorrow. So, if we can try and do our best with what we have, that might be best.
Point of order.
Trustee Guzzo.
It is 7 o'clock, so we have to either decide that going on to policy. But I concur with Will in regards to, it's been done. We've had since Friday to review it and given our feedback, so...
Point of order. We were going to agree to vote, so I think we just vote. Do we send it out as a... Or not?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guard.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to close debate and vote immediately.
All in favor? Motion passes. So, let's, a registered vote on the letter as written, as written with the changes.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Trustee Antamasi.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Zarnota. Trustee Charabell.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
So, we don't have to go on camera. Resolution re absentees. We have trustee Maza and trustee Agnew. Can I have a mover? Trustee Guzzo, trustee Zarnota, all in favor? Motion carries. Adjournment and closing prayer.
I sent you all the closing prayer. Out of solidarity with our French brothers and sisters, I thought we would say the Hail Mary in French. If you want to say it with me, please, I invite you. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Je vis cette Marie, pleine de grâce, seigneur et avec vous, vous appréciez les femmes, et j'essaye le plus de visant très bénie. C'est Marie, mère de Dieu, prêts pour le péché. Maintenant, alors de notre mort, amen.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you. Sure. Five minutes to get organized, okay? So, we can...